Thank you. Good evening. Okay, so welcome to another edition of the Planning Commission meeting for the city of Carson. Thank you for coming out tonight. We will begin the meeting with a roll call.
Madam Chair Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Montecarlo?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Fumei?
Here.
Commissioner Haf?
Present.
Commissioner Daktaso?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Commissioner Gera and Bayser Diaz are excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next we will have our flag salute and we will ask Commissioner Daktaso if he will lead us in our flag salute.
All right, everybody rise please. Put your hand on your heart and repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, concerning oral communications for matters not listed on the agenda, the public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Do we have any speakers for items not listed on the agenda?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Oral communications for non-public hearing items listed on the agenda. The public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Do we have any speakers?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be the approval of minutes from the November 25th, 2025 meeting of the Planning Commission. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the meetings.
Been moved and seconded. Please cast your ballot.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you. We have two items on the agenda tonight for public hearings. We have items 7A and 7B. I am going to take the liberty of switching those around. We will take item 7B first, which is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Carson recommending that the city council make findings pursuant to SEQA, guideline sections 15162 and 15168C2, and adopt general plan amendment number 03-25 and amendment 2, the noise element of the city's general plan to clarify its alignment with existing language in the city's noise ordinance and to establish clear standards for new development projects while protecting the community noise environment. And we will have a presentation by McKenna Alexander. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Thomas and the Honorable Commission. McKenna Alexander, Planning Manager here to present this evening's items with you. As mentioned, the application before you is general plan amendment number 0305. It's basically aligning our noise element to our noise ordinance within our municipal code. As an introduction and overview, state law requires our general plan to assess current and future community noise. Our Carson's noise element fulfills this and evaluates key noise sources. Our CMC, Carson Municipal Code Regulations, has our noise control ordinance that sets citywide noise standards to implement the noise element policies and that's pursuant to our Carson Municipal Code. To continue to provide an update purpose, following our 2023 general plan and EIR adoption, the proposed amendment will align the noise element with the ordinance and clarify standards for new development. Specifically, the project description is to consider recommending adoption of the proposed GPA to revise the noise element and resolve inconsistencies between the noise element and the Carson Municipal Code noise ordinance. In summary, our noise element ordinance alignment, that's what's being presented on this evening, basically they both use different noise limits creating ambiguity, as well as the ambient noise applicability is unclear. The proposed general plan amendment is to consider when the ambient noise exceeds the Table 93 standards, it will clarify ambient noise can serve as the standard. So basically, the ambient noise will become the standard based off of Table 93 of our standards. It will allow up to three decibels increase when the ambient levels are within 3 dB of, equal to, or above the Table 93 limits for the new development. To put this simply, we're trying to clarify and fix this. Basically, when we have new development coming into the city, we have a standard, we should have a standard of ambient noise. What's real, the noise is out there right now. So when new developments are coming in, that causes a slight increase, right? Our code doesn't allow that. So this fixes that. This allows us a small buffer, very minimal to the ear. So when these new projects come in, they're not getting stopped based off of ambient noise. We're fixing this, this conflicting, this confliction between our ordinance as well as our noise element. So those are two things that's going hand in hand. Going back to my presentation, so recommendation outcomes. It will establish clear and consistent criteria for modest noise increases from new development. It will clarify that the Carson Municipal Code section, exception applies to the general plan standards. And again, new development may increase ambient noise by up to three decibels without violating the noise element. Again, we have to make sure that our noise element and our noise ordinance within our municipal code matches and allow a certain increase to allow new development to come in when it affects ambient noise. In terms of our SEQA analyses, we did refer to our environmental consultant ESA, which a SEQA memo was prepared. And the determination is that our proposed GPA is within the scope of the existing 2023 EIR that was related to the Carson 2040 general plan. No subsequent EIR is required. And this proposed project would not introduce new or more severe impacts, noise impacts. No major revisions are required to the existing 2023 EIR. In conclusion, the amendment is fully covered by the 2023 EIR and no new development, excuse me, and no new environment document is required. The public hearing notice was done according to law. It was published in the newspaper by November 15th, as well as posted at City Hall in the last 72 hours. The recommendation is to please adopt the resolution number 252895, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Carson recommending that the city council make findings pursuant to SEQA guideline sections 15162 and 15168C2, and adopt general plan amendment number 0325, an amendment to the noise element of the city's general plan to clarify its alignment with existing language in the city's noise ordinance and to establish clear standards for new development projects while protecting the community noise environment. This concludes Staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions, as well as our consultant. Alan Seko is here from ESA if there's any technical questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation to my colleagues. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Thank you for their presentation again. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, did you entertain public comment?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I just passed right over that. I didn't have any cards, but is there anyone, because this is a public hearing, is there anyone who has not turned in a card to speak on this item and would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing and return back to the Planning Commission Board. You had no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion approving Staff's recommendation.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded, and we are ready for the vote. We don't have it yet. No. There we go. Okay, I got it now.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, the next item that we have on the agenda, also a public hearing, will be item 7A. Item 7A, which is a site plan and design review, number 1959-24. And we're going to have a presentation from my associate planner, Erin White.
Okay, it looks like we're up. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The project before you this evening is for review of DOR number 195924 for an application of an eight-unit detached residential project located on a 0.96 acre property at 21135 and 1/2 Bolso Street. Staff notes a tentative tract map number 84347 was submitted for review of residential condominium, but per ordinance number 252513, the map is reviewed administratively because it does not involve definition of a division of land. The subject property is situated the south end of Foxwell Avenue cul-de-sac and is surrounded by residences to the north, to the east, south, and Reflections Park, excuse me, to the west. The subject site is located in the low-density residential, the LDR Zone, and has a general plan, a land use designation of low-density residential. And the property is currently undeveloped. The proposed project consists of eight detached residences, proposed bungalow-style layout. Each unit measures 2,418 square feet and features three bedrooms, 2.5 bathrooms, and a 482-square-foot two-car garage. The exterior facades will feature a stucco finish with painted black fascia, wood railings, decorative columns, and painted garage doors. Access to the site is proposed off Foxwell Avenue, leading to a private street which will service the development. Staff was contacted by resident located on Foxwell Avenue who did express concerns related to the development. At the time, we recommended that the applicant hold a community meeting to receive feedback from the surrounding neighborhood before proceeding with the project. However, at the time, the applicant did decline. Therefore, Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission continue the item to allow sufficient time for a community meeting to take place. The proposed project is categorically exempt from provisions of SEQA for sections 15332 for infill development. And public notice was completed and posted on-site. Staff has two recommendations for the Planning Commission to choose, to continue the item to allow sufficient time for the applicant to hold a community meeting and solicit feedback from residents within a 750-foot radius of the project site. And in addition, to allow additional time for traffic analysis, which was a subsequent concern that was raised. The site was posted November. We became aware that the signage was, had deteriorated or been removed. And once I was notified, I reposted the site. But I'm available for any questions, and our applicant is available as well.
Thank you. To my colleagues, anyone have any questions of Mr. White?
And our, I'm sorry, our Public Works Engineering Department is here as well.
Thank you. You want to queue up or?
I do have one question, I understand.
Commissioner Haf, go ahead. Go ahead.
I understand you to say that the postage, the sign is, was down, however it came down. What was the actual time then that the sign was up there posted for it to be read?
So it was posted on the day it was required to have been posted, November. I'm unaware of when it was not there any longer, but I reposted it this week, once I became aware.
Oh, this week, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Daktaso?
You mentioned that the applicant, or there was a request from one of the neighbors to host, to have a community meeting, which was declined by the applicant. Was there a reason that community meeting did not happen?
So the resident expressed concerns with the project but did not request the meeting. Staff recommended that the meeting take place. The applicant may be better able to say why it was declined. But I believe at the time, they were looking for direction from city, from the Planning Commission to direct them to do that. But they are here as well.
So Commissioner, if I could. The Planning Commission has been very clear on the past in terms of their expectations of community meetings, specifically those about residential. So the applicant is here, and I would ask that the applicant come up and answer that question.
Before he comes up, do we have any other questions for Mr. White?
Not questions.
I did want to clarify. It says in the project description that our traffic engineer reviewed and approved the project. I didn't, I didn't know if there was further need for a traffic study, if our engineer did that. So it was reviewed by our traffic engineer at the time. I think it, the idea of it going back for further analysis would just be to go above and beyond to ensure that there's no impacts. Understood. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Monteclar.
On your report, you mentioned that at the Planning Commission's direction, staff has set a precedent of requesting applicant hosted community meetings.
Right, so we're going to let the applicant to come forward so that we can ask him why that did not happen?
But my question, Madam Witness, is will this establish precedent so that in future community projects that are located to residential zones, community, public hearing should be conducted prior to reaching the Planning Commission?
So it would be a community meeting, not a public hearing? Yes.
So that will establish as a requirement?
It's highly suggested that that happen, yes, and it is. Yes, Planning Manager.
Yes, the Planning Commission gave us this direction some years ago, that's one. And we did, we have since set a precedent regarding this action. As a result of this, we have also incorporated this in our Phase 1 zoning code update. So it's also codified stating regarding requiring community meetings. And so this is an established path that we have done for years and make sure that's in our new code.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. White? Thank you. The applicant is here? Yes, please come forward, whoever is. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Jefferson Choi, representing Synarch Studio, the architect working on the project with Erin and the rest of y'all.
So the number one question is, as was recommended, that there be a community meeting, and it was declined. We're asking why?
So the client, the owner, had thought that this can be addressed here. There was only one question that came out of any concerns, and he didn't think that a full community meeting was necessary apart from today.
You have to speak louder, people are having problems hearing you. Just talk into mic, it works.
I'm probably speaking quieter. I just got over being a sickness, but anyway. The client, the owner, thought that that could be addressed here, this forum, since there was only one concern that was brought up, one phone call that was brought up. And so he didn't think a separate, entire separate community meeting wasn't absolutely necessary.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else you'd like to say about the project before we open the public hearing?
No, it was correctly addressed.
Okay. Any questions of the representative of the applicant?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you share with us the concern of that particular resident?
If I can ask for some assistance from a client's representative?
Sure.
Hello, my name is Jerry Feldman. And, you know, we worked with Erin to determine what was the best approach here. And to my understanding, one person called. I said, who was it? What was the concern? We didn't know, except that, you know, I think the department recommended a community meeting, right? I don't think the customer asked for a community meeting, right? Okay, so there's one concern. They said, do you want to hold a community meeting? And we said, for one concern, why can't we just address it here? There didn't seem to be any need for one person in that whole community to have a community meeting. And he can share his concerns here, we can address them and move forward.
So the answer was?
And I have no idea what the concern was. And we didn't know who to contact. We made an initial effort to contact the people on Foxwell. And, you know, one person, basically, we were having the conversation. She talked about it needing a roof on her house. And we're going like, you know, this isn't heading in the right direction.
Okay, so.
So one concern, we didn't know what it was. Didn't see a need for a community meeting, as per the owner.
But you're open to it.
Well, if it's necessary.
Yeah, it's going to be necessary.
Can we just address the concern here?
We're going to have a community meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will, because obviously there are, there's more than one concern here because you can look around and see the people from that community, at least some of them. So obviously, there's more than one concern here. So we want to give them an opportunity to speak, and we will open the public hearing at this time. And I do have speakers' cards. And we are going to begin with Wayne Hall. Mr. Hall, as you come forward, it is my understanding that, based on the information I have in front of me, there are those who would like for you to speak on their behalf. So if I can have five people stand, once you stand, you are yielding your time to Mr. Hall, and.
There's actually more than five.
Am I taking one? No, 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 no. I want five people, hear what I'm saying. Give me five people. And the reason, it can be more, but if you decide you want to speak later, these five people will not be able to speak. So you might want to reserve your right. This is going to give you five minutes to speak. And our secretary will be. I'm sorry, what am I hearing? Yes, five minutes, right? Okay. So thank you for standing, you have five minutes, Mr. Hall.
Okay, maybe before we actually start the clock. There's a couple of questions that I had, and I guess we can't ask a question. I'd like to know how long the project is proposed to exist. How long is it going to take to build these?
This is not a question.
This is not, yeah.
Do that?
Yeah. Right now, this is your time.
Okay.
Right.
And then the other thing is, is there certainly going to be a community meeting? Is this the stuff?
There will be a community meeting. Right now, I want you, you got five minutes.
All right.
All right.
So anyways.
And your time begins now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll try to, my name is Wayne Hall. I'm a clinical laboratory scientist, I also have my own business, I also deal with construction. Okay, short-term impact from this. Environmental pollution, at least two years, and I'm assuming it's going to take, be about a two-year project. Heavy equipment dragging mud debris throughout the neighborhood with only one entranceway, that's the Foxwell Avenue, which is now a cul-de-sac, with no direct access to the main boulevards, such as Main and Bolso and those in 213. Anyways, all kinds of, you know, debris is going to be definitely taken through the neighborhood. Environmental pollution such as dust, diesel fumes, VOCs, silica. It's unavoidable with the excavation, demolition, material use, machinery, that that's going to happen. Four rainy seasons will probably occur within this period of time. That also means it's going to be mud runoff, and there's only one drain in the system, and it's off of Margaret Street, which is like three streets away. Noise pollution, no matter what, you hear about bulldozers, excavators, skid loaders. They have to access the area, they need to go over multiple speed bumps. And if you have ever heard of a 35-ton dumps truck going over a speed bump at 7:00 in the morning, wow, if you don't know, it's like an M80 going off, and it's right outside our window. All the other noise created from machinery, digging down the foundation, worm-dry saws, cutting wood, these are very loud. I'm glad we talked about the decibels in the community because they definitely would. I'm glad we talked about decibels in the community, because they definitely would be above what would be considered to be okay. Safety, City of Carson allows construction to occur 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on weekdays, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on holidays. We are gonna have large trucks moving through these times, through this cul-de-sac. The access traffic poses a direct hazard to multiple young children. We have two infant babies that are on our street, a 92-year-old elderly woman, my mother-in-law, sitting right here behind me. This is going to definitely be a hazard for us. If they wanted to build these in the 1980s, I think we all could have, you know, put up with that situation, because that's when these, this project was originally built, but now, this is a disaster for us. Sidewalks, they were sort of gonna be ripped up, there's gonna be electrical sewage, water lines put in, there's no avoiding that. Parking's gonna be a nightmare between the employees of the construction company and us as residents. Long-term impact, poor community, poor communication to the community. You know, you discussed that you tried to talk to people, we live on that street, and every one of these neighbors behind me live on that street, nobody came and talked to me. I actually saw a surveyor down there one day, talked to him, he showed me the plans up there, the basic plans, and this is like a year ago. I tried to contact people, I tried to contact people in the planning commission, and I was getting nowhere. So for him to say that he discussed this with neighbors and to get feedback, I severely disagree with this man. Problems, parking, it's gonna be a disaster on our street, and leading, streets leading out. Misleading signage, the sign also says that, the sign is interesting for me, because it says low-density residential zone, well, 2020 census in Carson, population of 94,000 residents, more now, more like probably 100K, especially if you, even if you add illegal immigrants, you're gonna be higher. This equates to 5,000 to 6,000 people per square mile. The west parts, the west Carson population is actually 10,000 per square mile, according to the US Census Bureau. A low population density is less than 2,000 people per square mile. So I don't know how they're saying that this is a low-density population here. Medium density is around 2,000 to 10,000 people, high density is over 10. The sign also says 21135 and a half Bolsa Avenue. There's not one word on that side stating that the project will directly impact and adversely affect the residents of Foxwell Avenue in the streets leading out. Everyone who reads the sign or have read it, they think that the, the project is off Bolsa, not off Foxwell. In reality, it's Foxwell. This is gonna affect us. Let's talk about the builders and the people talking about this. Eucalyptus, this tree was removed about two years ago.
You have nine seconds in counting.
The builder already made a negative environmental impact with that, removing a massive tree which had hundreds of birds nesting, including a red-tailed hawk nest, family skunks, squirrels, and other animals dislocated because of it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. The next speaker that I have is for Ivan Ramos. Three minutes, yes, introduce yourself.
Thank you for giving me time, the gentleman failed to say that they did...
I want you to speak into the mic, so, yes.
He failed to say that he did a proper analysis, they did not mention that there's an elementary school right off 213th, and we have a lot of traffic in those residential areas. Kids walking to school with their parents with kids, being dropped off and picked up, not only on 213th, but also on Foxwell and Bolsa, and on my side, which is on 211th Street. We constantly get them walking back and forth, they failed to mention that. With all that construction and all those new residents, it will change our neighborhood completely. It will affect the type of commute, and kids getting to school, coming back from school, and a lot of traffic. We already have it, and they're all residential street, 213th, we already have a lot of traffic. On 211th, which is right in between those two streets, Foxwell and Bolsa, they're right in the middle. And people already, we have a lot of, in the morning when I'm trying to go to work, there's a lot of traffic. So that's gonna create more havoc, they did not fail to mention that, and nobody contacted us. All of us are here to protest, because this isn't news to us. And for them to say that they didn't know, they didn't do their due diligence, I'm sorry, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker we have is Jocelyn, is it Bada? Bada, thank you, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Chair Thomas and the Planning Commission. As you said, Jocelyn Bada, I just wanted to continue off of what Wayne has already mentioned, but I think there was another point regarding safety. One of the main reasons why everyone who has purchased a house on Foxwell Avenue did so because of a safer, private area with very limited traffic and fewer houses. The problem is, as you've also already heard, I think, I'll just repeat, increased traffic congestion on local streets, decreased privacy, conceivably an increase in crime, lowering our house value, overburdening lower, local sewers, water supplies, and our storm drains. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who either did not stand, would like, and did not fill out a card, who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none. We will now close the public hearing, and to my colleagues, we're open for discussion, comments, questions. Anyone? I'm sorry? No further discussion?
I have a comment, Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, our commission has had a practice of having community meetings and making every effort to bring the parties together so that we can mitigate, or consider mitigating some issues before the commission considers the issue. And as we always mention during our commission meetings, you know, we're here to serve the public and to ensure that our processes are as transparent as possible and that we provide the community an opportunity to come forward. And I want to thank all the members of the community who took their time from their very busy schedules to come here to this meeting to voice, you know, your, your opinions and your concerns about this. You're the, the reason why our government works, and if you're silent, then we don't hear from you, and we're here to do that, we're here to listen to you and to provide the forums that are necessary, help facilitate them at least, so that the public's concerns are heard. And so, in that spirit, I would like the board, the commission, to either continue the dialogue and consider having the developer have a community meeting with the residents and having our staff present so that we can have a public discussion and a transparent process.
Thank you, but if there's no one else about to speak from the commission, I, I need to have my say. Thank you. So thank you for coming out, appreciate you taking the time to do that, because I've visited your neighborhood more than once. I couldn't believe what I saw. Your community is beautiful, quiet streets, very nicely done, and many of you have been there for some 30, 40 years. So this is a major, major decision that has to be made about that property that is there in your midst, and it is vacant. I, I want to say that I do agree with our Commissioner Wilson that this item will be continued, but we want to continue it with some conditions. And the first condition is, there will be a community meeting, that has to happen. And, and, and has to happen in all sincerity, where you're actually listening to the people. I don't know where you live, I have no idea, I don't need to know, but common sense tells me, if it was your house, sitting on that street, you would not be cavalier about this project. You would want to have your say, you would want to be listened to, and you would want there to be a lot of mitigation, mitigating factors before this project moves forward. So I want you, and I want you to go back to the owner of this property and let them know that these residents care about their homes. These are their investments, that aren't a pack-up and move and go anywhere else. So treat this community as if you lived in it. It is that important. Treat it that way. In addition to that, I'm going to ask staff to, in the condition of, in, in the spirit of continuing in this item, there must, there must be a traffic study. Because when I look at eight units going in this property, and I'm gonna call it Little Foxwell, is the only entrance way, ingress and egress. And then when you think about our times, where you have, you know, at least two cars per family, at least, and then you have kids who move back home, and they bring a car, the multiplication of cars that will be going through there, the traffic is going to be incredible. So we cannot treat it lightly. So I'm gonna ask staff that they recommend, we're recommending to staff that there be a traffic study done. There are safety concerns, there's construction concerns as it relates to the size of trucks that would be going through there. Residential streets, at least in Carson, were not built for these big trucks to go through constantly, consistently, for this long period of time, and it's gonna take a minute. But these are just some of the things that we're looking at, that we need to be very much aware of what the negative effects are going to be. So, with that in mind, we have, I think Commissioner Wilson was making a motion? For the continuance?
Excuse me, to continue this matter until a community meeting is held?
And we can address all of the other concerns that we've identified? I'm gonna, can I get a second for that motion?
I think so.
Okay. And I'm gonna defer right now to our Assistant City Attorney to make sure we get all of the things listed that we want, the conditions that we want for this continuance.
So just to clarify if I understood the motion correctly, it's to continue the item to a date to be continued, to be determined, with direction that a community meeting be held, and that a traffic study be prepared, which will include not only the traffic, potential traffic impacts of operation of the project, but also construction?
Yes.
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 And of course, it would be, the public hearing would be re-noticed before it comes back to the planning commission?
Absolutely, because when I got there, and I've been to the sites more than once, now what I observed was there were two signs posted, and they were ripped off the, they were ripped off of the gate because the corners of the signs were still attached to the, the zip ties. So they were ripped off, they didn't deteriorate, they were ripped off, okay? That is unacceptable, they're there for a reason. So, I, I, we need to make sure that when those signs are posted, they remain posted. They're there for a reason. Okay? That, that does not vote well when, when I know they were deliberately taken down, and I have pictures of it, I did take pictures. One thing this planning commission does is, we go to the site. We don't just sit up and look at maps, we want to be in the community. Okay? So this is not a Q and A moment? Now we'll call for the vote, for the motion and the second at hand, are we ready? Okay, anybody else want to discuss the, the motion? Are we ready to vote? No, you cannot. You had your opportunity. No, you, hold a community meeting. Then you can make a comment. No comment? We're voting now. Cast your votes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. So this item is continued to a later date, to be determined, and we want to make sure that all the conditions that we have stated are met before we return. Thank you again for coming out. Appreciate you speaking up, and you will be notified properly, so that you will have an opportunity to speak. Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be the manager's report.
All right, good evening, Chair, good evening, planning commissioners, happy Tuesday evening.
Thank you.
I just want to recognize, as always, staff, so Makina, her team, Aaron, for the hard work they undertook in getting these reports to you this evening. Again, our goal always is to give you good information so you guys can make informed decisions on behalf of this community. Also like to thank you for your service to the City of Carson, and I don't know that we're gonna have enough, another meeting before the holidays, so happy holidays, everybody. And one thing I mentioned to the Chair that we are looking to do, starting next year, is to provide dinner for the planning commission before our meetings, and so we will be working with you, with the Chair and with the commission to make sure that we can do that, starting next year. So, that is my update, Chair, thank you.
I think you, you got a few gold stars on that one. And now we'll have comments from, the council will start on my right, to Commissioner Montecle.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and good evening to all the concerned residents, Carson's residents. We appreciate your presence tonight. Before coming over, I check, you know, my, my cellphone and look at what is new or exciting in our city. And I'm happy to see, to say that, you know, I have good news, you know? So there are community projects in Carson, and most recently, we have the 10 million amphitheater at Foisha Park, where, you know, most of the commissioners were attendant, attendants. And we also crack down on illegal street racing, which, you know, definitely save lots of lives if there are, if we allow this illegal street racing. So those are only some of good things happening in Carson. So, those are only some of good things happening in Carson. And I wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Happy to be here. Happy to see the community coming out to exercise our processes. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Mfume.
I want to say it's a pleasure to be here. And I just want to say this commission really cares about Carson, the community. We really, really care. And that's really what we are, we live here in Carson, and we really care about what goes on here. So, and thank you for coming out, the community. Thank you for coming out. And I just wanted to say happy holidays to everyone.
Oh, I'm complete. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
I pulled in, and everything is so festive and beautiful. The holiday season is here, and I just want to, you know, wish everyone a happy holidays and to thank everyone for coming out. And of course, thank my colleagues for their continued service on this commission and also our staff for just always being amazing and doing, you know, your due diligence and bringing us information and great reports that we need to make decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doc Dossel.
I definitely echo my fellow commissioners. Kudos to everybody involved with this meeting. My fellow commissioners for, you know, the service that we put to support our city, city staff, a lot of hard work goes into making these reports, and that definitely is very much appreciated. And it's always exciting to see our community at these meetings. I know we all have, you know, our hearts in the right place when it comes to, to supporting our community. And it's always nice to see the community be a part of this process. Unfortunately, it's a little bit of an exception rather than the rule with these meetings. You know, more often than not, it's a lot of empty seats in this room. But it's, it's always nice to see the passion of the community. And that's part of the reason why, you know, these community meetings, it's not just something that we say that should be done, that we, you know, we highly, highly recommend. But it should be something that, you know, in terms of being a good neighbor, it's, should be part of the process. And I was excited to see that we're all in agreeance with that aspect of it. Not necessarily a requirement, but definitely strongly recommended by this commission. And, you know, in terms of being able to, to talk things out, that's, that's, and to hear what our neighbors say. I think that's imperative in order for all of us to move forward. And we're hearing a lot of neighbors right now. But, you know, it is the holiday season, so I wish everybody happy holidays. I personally go to Saint Philomena Church. We have an Advent concert and a tree lighting ceremony this coming Saturday. So, if you all are available, you're more than welcome to come through. It should be a fun time. A lot of, it's like six, six different choirs are gonna be performing. We'll have refreshments afterwards. So, it's just another opportunity to get together as a community in celebration of the holiday season. So, that completes me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Huff.
Well, seeing as I'm the, I'm the last person, I can say ditto, ditto, ditto. We have had a really good meeting, and I too am really happy that we're all the same mind. I think I was just ready to go ahead and jump forward 'cause I, I knew that we were gonna ask that there be a community meeting. It is most important that Carson residents know that you are being heard and always speak up. Don't let anybody squash you down. If you have a concern or want to know anything, you have a right to ask that. Along with all my colleagues, I congratulate and say thank you so much for this staff. This has been a wonderful, fast-moving, full year. And it is wonderful to hear that we're gonna be promised a meal as well to entice us, to entice us to come. But we've been coming without the meal because we, our hearts are in the right place. Believe me, we do want to make a difference and continue to do that here in Carson. Happy holidays to everyone. I did talk to our Commissioner Guerrero. We, we want to continue to pray for our members that are not here for illness or whatever. And hopefully that going into the new year, everyone will be recovered and ready to go. But thank you again. Thank you, fellow commissioners. Happy holidays to everybody. Enjoy. Thank you. I'm complete.
I just love how she says ditto, 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 and then she goes over. Nevertheless, it's been an incredible year. It's been an incredible year for the City of Carson. We continue to grow. We continue to build. And we're, we're mindful of our residents. We're mindful of the businesses. And we have to coexist. And so, we want to do that in partnership and make sure we consider everyone that's involved because that is most important, especially for those of us who own property here, sleep here, get up and go to work and come back. All of that is critical. Before I say closing remarks, I will also commend the staff. So happy that Nathan Freeman is here. Growing more fond of him every time I see him. I will ask McKenna Alexandro, who's our planning manager, if you have any final statements. This is the end of the year.
Well, I want to first formally say thank you again to the commission as I was dealing with my mom and her subsequent deaths. I do appreciate those that reached out to me, said kind words to me, crying all in this council area, and, and so forth. I just want to really say thank you again for your concern and care. That's one. And two, I pray that you have a wonderful holiday season. Happy New Year if I don't see you beforehand. Remember the love on your family and friends. We have this one life. Use it well. And thank you again for the, I'm, I'm just, just so stoked having the opportunity of being your planning manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, our Assistant City Attorney, Ben Jones.
Thank you to the commissioners for your service this year. Another wonderful year, working with the Planning Commission. Thank you to the staff, amazing as always, and happy holidays.
And also our incredible, incredible secretary, planning secretary. Would you like to have some, would you like to speak?
I really love this commission. I'm happy to be here. And happy holidays.
Thank you. We have Ken, one of our engineers. We have Erin with us. But to all of the rest of the staff that you don't see, we want to say happy holidays. There is an event coming up this Saturday at Veterans Park. It will be another toy giveaway. It will be a basketball thing between KJLH and, and the Carson staff. And that's gonna take place at the Veterans Complex, which is located at two-two-four-zero-zero. Look at me, Manetta. So, if you, if you're looking for something to do, that's this coming Friday. I think it begins around five o'clock. It's Friday, right? Yeah, it's Friday. Yeah, the twelve. So, bring the kids out. We just had a very successful Winter's Fest from the city that was incredible. I've, I've never seen so many kids in one place. But they, it was wonderful. It was just wonderful. So, we want to continue to celebrate all of the things that our city council brings to this city for its residents. Be kind to one another. Love one another. Be safe. Happy holidays and good night.